Four zero four.
Sir, yes, this is a request for a variance to section ninety dash one forty seven for use provision.
Can I ask you one question? Are we good to go through the end of the agenda here? Okay, great.
At thirteen twenty five Apling Harlem Road on two point five nine four plus or minus acres. The subject property is located on the east side of Apling Harlem Road, near the intersection of Apling Harlem and Wrightsboro Road. It shows the zoning of the site. Properties currently zoned C two general commercial. Properties in the south are C two and R one. Properties in the north, east and west are all zoned RA. And you heard them earlier tonight as part of the Greenpoint Plan Unit Development.
And Ms. Neal, could you help? Sir, could I ask you to remove your cap while you're inside? Thank you.
You also have I twenty is approximately one mile north of the subject property. This shows the aerial of the site. Does the existing site. The plat of the property. And these are the plans that applicant has submitted for a Sprint food store. And they're just requesting a variance to increase the hours of operation to provide service twenty-four hours a day. Current county code limits a convenience store with field pumps, hours of operation beginning no earlier than six AM and ending no later than eleven PM. And the subject property and the properties included in the Greenpoint Plan Unit Development are all within the Apling Harlem Employment Activity Center on the future land use map, which is intended for light industrial, professional offices, warehouse space, and manufacturing. The closest existing residential properties are located in the Hattrick Glen subdivision, which is south of the property, opposite Wrightsboro Road. And it's zoned R one, single family residential with one plus or minus acre lots. The Sprint food store will face Apling Harlem Road away from Hattrick Glen subdivision, will not directly impact those residences or any other neighboring properties. And the store will provide service to I twenty, Greenpoint, and surrounding residential properties twenty-four hours a day. And therefore, staff recommends approval.
All right, gentlemen, any questions? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Come forward, give us your name and home address and any additional information you'd like us to have.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm Jim Price. I live at one oh seven Flowing Wells Road, a farm between Aiken, Wagner, South Carolina. Representing the applicant. As we certainly concur with staff, doesn't look as if a twenty-four hour operation here would be of impact to the surrounding properties. Answer any questions you may have.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, we might call you back up.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve file VA two zero zero four zero four variance to increase the hours of operation at thirteen twenty five Apling Harlem Road.
Go here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Ms. Mystery, file RZ two zero zero five zero three. Major S one revision.
Yes, so this is major revision for multiple properties on Baston Road and Phillips Drive. It's total of twenty-nine point three two acres and the current zoning is S one special for the Augusta Christian School. And the request is for a major revision for building expansion and additional athletic fields. Here's the location on Baston Road. And the zoning showing S one. A close-up of the aerial shows multiple properties on Phillips Drive that are also owned by the school. And site photographs. This this party is on Phillips Drive. So over the years, the school has bought some of the homes that were on Phillips Drive and used them as part of the school facilities. This is one that's going to be referred to as we move through the project. Here's a plat of the property. And there's several plats because of the number of lots. This is the existing site plan and it shows the existing properties in the school and we're going to zoom into the window on the side of Phillips Drive. So over the years, there's been several rezonings. Some are listed here, two thousand and six, the Field House addition was added with some revisions to the main campus. Two thousand and eight, other properties were added, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and two, and three as well along Phillips Drive. The note on the top right, there have been complaints by residents on Lake Shore Loop. And so a previous rezoning required that gate to be locked when not in use and that is still identified on the new plan. This is the proposed site plan and it shows the new main building that's going here. There's more classrooms that are going to be added here and a multipurpose center here. There's an upgrade to the stadium here and a new field here. This is the close-up of the proposed site plan. So basically, after the staff had reviewed the narrative and the plan, we were aware of the history and the complaints from residents on Phillips Drive. So some of the conditions that we've added is that this parking lot here, which is existing, is just for staff and service vehicles only. The school is asked to just use a Baston Road entrance here for the future goal of the student pickup and drop off. Also, the Wexford subdivision is here and with the future softball field there, we have asked for a condition to increase the buffer against Wexford. This is a master plan revision that was just received this week after some conversations with the applicant and residents, communications with emails. The main complaint they had was traffic on Phillips Drive and Lake Shore. And so the engineer and applicant have come up with a revision to the plan that adds the future parking area shown there with the arrows. And one of the conditions also includes the completion of a fence and a landscaping area along Phillips Drive to further protect the residents along there. And the applicant has had an architect draw up the proposed rendering of the building. So this will be the first building section that's built on Baston Road that connects the existing classrooms. And this is the review into the school. And the future land use map, this is the neighborhoods area, but it's right on the edge of Baston Activity Center. So the staff recommends approval of the major S one revision, building expansion and fields. And the conditions are that a combination plot is required prior to the submittal of the building permit for the first building on Baston Road. The parking area near the Field House shall be for staff and service vehicles only. School should provide for regular pickup and drop off for students from the Baston Road parking lot. All site plans submitted shall specifically address parking requirements. The fence, internal sidewalk extension, landscaping approved has only been partially complete. The condition requires the fence and landscaping completion along the frontage on Phillips Drive within the six months of the Board of Commissioners' approval. Now, we have taken out the part that went out in the package last week of the internal sidewalk extension because the applicant has requested that because they intend to demolish that existing building, that sidewalk is not required. The last two conditions, the existing buffer must remain adjacent to Wexford subdivision to a minimum depth of fifty feet and may require supplementation. And the engineer must meet with the county landscape architect during the design phase to address any and all buffers required on site.
Okay, is that all? I was waiting for you to turn the page on me here. All right, gentlemen, any questions to staff? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant here? Mr. Walden, good to see you again. Give us your name and home address, please, sir.
Les Walden, forty-three seventy Deerwood Lane West, Evans, Georgia, three oh nine.
And you're the headmaster at Augusta Christian now, okay? All right, sir. Anything additional you'd like to include?
Just that, as directed before, the gate on Lake Shore Loop does stay closed. We don't use it. It's for emergency access only. The parking lot referred to in the back currently is used for parking for staff and vendors. I think the concern is that we had drop off in the back middle school, even though they didn't park, they would drive around and through. We're willing to modify that, move it to Baston Road, meet everything that recommended.
Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir, please come forward and give us your name and home address.
I'm Raymond Smith. I reside at thirty-six twenty-two Phillips Drive. We completely do not disagree with the plan. We only oppose the fact that, you know, everything that was mentioned was covered for us, the transportation plan. However, one big concern for the resident there is parking on street and off street because most of the parking, you know, it's a small, narrow road that most of the parking is along Phillips Drive during events and activities and it spews over into the property areas. It's pecan archit and most of the folks are not considered that. They get out of their cars and after they park on our lines and pick up our pecans. And we're very much not liking that. So we just wish that the parking, you know, consider a parking deck or something to put back there in addition to all the things they're trying to add in the back, try to improve the parking from the neighbors. Most of the neighbors there are elderly folks in their upper eighties, you know. You know, we could, you know, we just like to see a better relationship between the school and the residents. Other than a whole lot of things that they're adding in, we're not understanding what they're doing because it's a mystery for me at thirty-six twenty-two with an empty lot and two buildings who residents has been there more than ten-plus years and it hadn't been converted into the campus area yet, you know, like what are they going to do with that? And how close are they going to come to the road with the additional bills without putting some type of buffer up that makes some sense that doesn't take down the property value?
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ two zero zero five zero three, major S one revision adopting new site plan for Augusta Christian Schools, including multiple properties off Baston Road and Phillips Drive.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? To approve carries five zero. Ms. Boltie, file RZ two zero zero five zero four.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a rezoning at one twenty-eight Old Evans Road from R three, single-family residential to C one neighborhood commercial. Property is located on the north side of Old Evans Road at its intersection with Murray Road and is currently zoned R three, single-family residential. It sits kind of at the entrance to a neighborhoods area, so the properties to the north and the west are zoned R three. To the south and the east, we have a little bit more of a mix of zonings. The S one here is for a daycare, although it's currently in use as a residence. Across the street is the fire station and parking lot as well as C one neighborhood commercial zoning. Farther down Old Evans towards Washington Road, you do get more of a mix of C one and C two commercial properties. This is the aerial of the site. It does have an existing house on it. And here's a picture of that house. It's been vacant for quite a while. If anyone's driven past it in the last several years, it's been vacant and for sale. The applicants are proposing to redevelop the site as a small multi-tenant commercial building and are requesting the C one zoning to facilitate that. There are going to be some modifications to the site plan, particularly concerning access and traffic management. Traffic engineering has several conditions with this request, including the possibility of this property only being allowed access on Murray Road and not on Old Evans at all due to the high traffic volume in this area and the difficulty of actually lining up the driveways and in this section of Old Evans Road. And this is the existing site and this is of the buffer on the kind of northwest side of the property adjacent to the neighborhood. Relevant to one of the conditions, you can see this is quite a lot of mature trees. It creates a very nice natural buffer in its current state. One of the conditions is proposing that these existing trees remain as part of that buffer and not be cleared and replanted with the development. In terms of future land use, this property is in the neighborhood's character area that is intended for a single-family residential use, which is how the property is currently zoned. However, it is on the north edge of the Martinez Activity Center, which is a mixed-use center that provides for shops, restaurants, offices, higher-density residential uses, things like that. As a lowered-intensity commercial zoning, the C one zoning district can create kind of a nice transition between these two character areas. The C one district is intended to provide for commercial uses that kind of blend with the character of adjacent residential areas. So staff does feel like this is an appropriate zoning district for this property. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. The health department is requiring that the building connect to sewer unless it's absolutely impossible to do so. And water utility did indicate with their comments that there may be concerns with the elevation of the sewer that's nearby. So if they do have to be on a septic system, that is going to require a soil survey and likely limit the uses allowed on the property. We also have the condition for the existing trees to remain within the buffers and then the architecture of the proposed building to blend into those adjacent residential areas as intended by the code description of C one zoning. That does include a request for the building design to be reviewed by Planning Commission prior to the issuance of the building permit. And finally, we have the traffic engineering conditions regarding driveway access, which again refers to that possible limitation of access to Murray Road only. The only possible location on Old Evans Road may be directly across from De Soto Drive, which may conflict with buffer requirements, which may again kind of push the access over to Murray Road. Problem with that is Murray Road is a residential street, so access from Murray Road would require the road to be upgraded to commercial standards from the intersection with Old Evans Road to that driveway location. That concludes that concludes the recommendation.
All right, gentlemen, any questions to staff? Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Good evening. I'm Bill Corr with Blue Water Engineering, the project engineer. I'm on behalf, here on behalf of the applicant, and I know you've been here a long time, so I've just prepared a brief forty-five-minute speech for you tonight. I'm just kidding. I think the staff did a great job. I think they covered everything. I believe that the conditions are reasonable and that those could be worked around with the site plan. We don't really have any issue with the conditions that staff is recommending for the rezoning.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, ma'am, please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Hi, my name is Casey Stringfield and I live at one three three one Fall Line Drive in Martinez, Georgia, three zero eight zero nine. Back on the property right behind the proposed. Boltie, I think you did a great job in explaining that and I completely agree with a lot of the things that you guys want to do, which is wonderful. The trees are definitely a nice natural buffer, although if you could get me five feet off from my fence, clear all those vines out, I'd be in good shape. Just let me know. No, the main purpose of this was, I just wanted to make sure the buffers that we're looking at are really most substantial and most efficient for the area. There are several houses actually behind there, including another street that's actually off of Old Evans Road. So just monitoring those buffers and trying to ensure the efficiency of them possibly is something I wanted to keep in mind. The only thing I will say for the full access to Murray Road is, the hard part with that will be, when you come off of Murray Road already in the mornings and the evenings, it is almost impossible, impossible to take a left at five o'clock, six o'clock. You might as well turn right, call it a day. At the end of the day, it's just, that's the only thing I would suggest you rethink or take a look at if at all possible. Just some suggestions. Other than that, super brief. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you coming out. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
My name's David Huffmeyer. I live at one thirty-five Fall Line Drive, Martinez, Georgia, three oh nine oh seven. And my concern also is the buffer and trees are there, but there still is a lower gap that light would come through and the noise. That's what I'm concerned about that. And I'm also concerned about the traffic on Murray Road. If traffic is coming in there, two new subdivisions have been put in there recently. And like she said, you cannot turn on that road in the morning or the evenings. And I'm concerned maybe a traffic light there would be useful.
Okay, that's another department. I wish that we could decide traffic lights here, but that's not under anything that we can control.
I mean, will traffic be considered?
That's one of the things that will be considered, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve RZ twenty zero five zero four with conditions.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Mr. Butler, file RZ two zero zero five zero five, major putt revision.
This is a request for major putt revision over at four seventeen through four twenty-one Town Park Boulevard. Several properties on Herford Farm and also Marie Street. It's a combined five point one acres currently zoned and planning in development. A major putt revision is for fifty-five and up independent living senior community. This location of the property, just down the street ways on Herford Farm Road and Town Park Boulevard off of North Villar Road. In terms of the zoning of the property, again, it's currently zoned, planning in development. You have to the south, more of the same, planning in development. Also, to the west, again, more of the same planning in development. Across the street, you have a collection of R two properties. That's all residential. And to the east, you have a mixture of C one and R two on Marie Street. This is an aerial of the site. Again, currently undeveloped, you have a few existing homes on the site that would be removed if the property is rezoned. The existing site itself is for sale. And it shows the, this is the property on Long Herford. This is Marie Street here, backside of Marie Street as well, going into the planning development at the back. It shows a compiled plat of all the different properties and a concept plan. So back in twenty seventeen, this collection of properties minus basically these two here was rezoned for a assisted living and memory care facility. Again, that's basically a facility for older folks. Then in twenty eighteen, they rezoned the last two properties to make a better site plan and added some professional uses to that. This request is to change that entire site from that use over to a assisted, or over to an independent living facility. Again, it's fifty-five and up. Per their narrative, you're looking at seventy-four units, mixture of one-bedroom and two-bedroom. You have to be fifty-five years older to live there. Fairly basic from that standpoint. In terms of the site plan itself, it hasn't really changed much from before. Again, you have a building addressed in the street. You have your parking behind, which is actually a little better than it was before. And then you have, again, there's no more professional building at the back. You have more parking than before. Again, these are people that can move around a little better. The memory care, assisted living. You have a community garden on the site itself. We'll see the building here in a moment. And one thing too with this plan, you notice it's kind of set back from the road. It doesn't go the whole way up Town Park Boulevard or Herford Farm. That is because this is already set up to take advantage of the widening project that will come through in a few years. In terms of the building itself, it shows elevations of it. It does meet Evans Town Center. They're required to do that anyway. But again, showing us what it's going to look like is beneficial. Again, it looks like an apartment building because that's what it is. It is for fifty-five and up. You have a mixture of brick and also hardy and also architectural shingles on the roof. You know, we have the rest of the elevations here, give you an idea of what it's going to look like. So overall, staff has hell of concerns with it. And one of the things that's more of a, it's a technical issue. Again, they had landscape strip. They say they're going to meet our code, which would require a twenty-five-foot landscape strip. It needs to be reduced down to twenty for their site plan to work. So we do have a condition regards to that. The last one is from traffic engineering in terms of Marie Street. It's a very small road. You've probably seen it before. There's been some questions in the past about, does it need to be private, et cetera, et cetera? But again, anything that's built on that road, we'll have to look at how that road is upgraded in terms of, you know, taking advantage of, not taking advantage of, but it's a residential street and it's turning over to commercial, will require some work. In terms of the future land use map, it's within the Evans Town Center, Activity Center. That is a mixed-use center. This type of use makes a lot of sense here. Again, we do allow apartments here. We do allow things that are a lot more dense than normal. Again, this location itself, you have medical units, medical uses behind it, recreational, you have the Y, et cetera, et cetera, around it. Makes a lot of sense to have for an older community. So again, staff does recommend approval with those conditions.
And one question, you've mentioned apartments a couple of times. The county code distinguishes between a senior living facility and an apartment. So these units wouldn't count against the apartment total that we allot every year?
They would not. Again, it's very clear that a senior living does not count against that at all. There's some question of whether that count matters or not with the recent rezoning, but again, it's still there, still a policy, so.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
Yeah, what are you calling senior? You know, I'm fifty-eight. Do I look like a senior?
Senior by this definition.
You old as hell.
You're welcome to move there.
It was already zoned for something very similar before this. So it's not like you're just coming with another teach total difference only for it.
No, again, it's not this exact same use. That's why they're here. But again, you're looking at memory care and assisted living. Yes, you could say that. And very similar plan. Yeah, very similar plan. And not same use, but very similar.
All right, thank you, sir. Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir, would you like to come forward, give us your name and home address and any additional information you'd like us to consider?
I appreciate it. My name is John McKnight and I live at six five zero Scarlet Oak Trail in Milton, Georgia. I'm with Piedmont Housing Group. I'm here today to give you a brief overview of Town Park Senior Village. Town Park Senior Village would be an independent living community for seniors aged fifty-five and older and will consist of seventy-four independent senior living homes made up of twelve one-bedroom and sixty-two two-bedroom units. It'll be located on the five point one acres of land at the southeast corner of Hereford Farm and Town Park Boulevard. It'll be a three-story building with an elevator. And as Mr. Butler mentioned, it'll be constructed with brick and hardy plank siding only. We will not use any vinyl siding, just to make that clear. I do want to emphasize that Town Park Senior Village will strictly be for seniors aged fifty-five and older with no exceptions for any circumstances. No individuals under fifty-five will be allowed to reside at the development. So this development will not impact the school system in any way. Now, one thing, Town Park Senior Village will be a mixed-income property and it'll consist of primarily units targeting folks that make sixty percent of very immediate income and it also will include market rate units. Right now, our rents for the market rate units will be seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars a month for a one-bedroom unit and eight hundred and eighty dollars a month for a two-bedroom unit. The rents for those units targeting folks making sixty percent of very immediate income will be five hundred and eighty-eight dollars for a one-bedroom unit and a six hundred and eighty dollars for a two-bedroom unit. We are also the owners and developers of a Horizon Senior Village just up the road in Grove Town. Horizon Senior Village was completed in two thousand and fifteen and continues to operate at a hundred percent occupancy and we have a three hundred and thirty person waiting list at Horizon Senior Village. So that, I think that demonstrates the considerable demand for this product in Columbia County. Additionally, we've built fifteen similar independent living senior communities throughout Georgia and South Carolina since two thousand and ten. Now regarding, you know, the type of residents that live in our communities, they're typically retired, receive social security and some pension benefits. They enjoy living in an active senior community in the maintenance-free lifestyle we provided our properties. Retired individuals don't travel very much during peak times and therefore our development will generally doesn't have, our developments don't have a very significant level on traffic because of that. We will have a full-time property manager and maintenance technician onsite Monday through Friday to ensure that our residents and our properties' concerns are met in a timely fashion. We'll also engage a third-party landscaping company to perform regular landscaping to ensure that our property is kept in pristine condition throughout the year. Also, all of our residents will undergo a credit and criminal background check during the leasing process. That's kind of it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to, you know, address any questions or concerns anyone has.
Would you go over the median income portion again?
So the property will consist primarily of folks that are sixty percent of very immediate income and we will also have market rate units. The sixty percent area median income units will be priced at five hundred and eighty-eight dollars a month for a one-bedroom and six eighty for a two-bedroom.
So our new median income's what, eighty-three thousand dollars? Ms. Garnowitz, isn't that what we heard?
Household.
That household income, so this is individual income?
That's right.
Okay.
Correct.
Right. Gentlemen, any other questions?
Are they square feet or like the one versus the two? How big are they?
I have an idea, but Josh, do you know off the top of your head? About 880 for a one, 1100 for a two.
Bergen.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir, please give us your name and home address.
Bradley, my address is 2262 William F. Parkway. I'm here on behalf of my mom, 4397 Hereford Farm Road, right across the street from this development. My question, how do you go back to the overview? Okay, right here. Now, with the widening road project on Hereford Farm Road, they had projected that the Town Park Drive here with Rachel Drive, which is approximately there on the other side. Anyway, these two roads were supposed to slide towards each other. If that is going to be happening, what is going to happen to this property here? Because like I said, this road here was supposed to come through like this on the last thing that I saw with the.
Mr. Schlafter, do you have an answer for this?
Just as it's shown on that drawing there, that black line is the right-of-way line, the proposed right-of-way line. The existing road is here. They're looking to pull the existing or the new right-of-way line to here.
Okay.
So all this is existing area that they're going to move away from, so our new road will continue here.
So this is the established road now?
Correct.
It's going to come through here?
Correct. We're a little off on our drawing.
Right, right, right. Yes, sir. That was my question.
And I'll also point out that the road was having to shift hard north on the drawing here, north, because of a historic structure that sits right here.
I can take it down with a sledgehammer.
But if this project happens, that historic structure's no longer there. That would give us a lot more freedom to adjust that road back away south, save the houses on the north.
So that's what they're projecting, is to slide this road down and take care of these four or five homes that are right here behind CVS?
That's our goal, yes, sir. Now, if this project falls apart, we're right back to that same historic structure, and we're right back to where we were.
Right. So there is a chance that this road widening project, all right, will slide away from the far side over to this way and not affect any of those homes.
What's the historic structure? Moonshine still or what?
The old, old house.
Just an old house.
House?
Yeah, how the state determines what a historical structure is is crazy, because literally, I can go over there right now with a sledgehammer and hit one corner and the whole house comes down.
And a private owner can do that.
That's an historical structure.
He can't.
All right.
So that was my question about that.
Thank you, sir.
I guess when the road widening project, that'll be a different group. We'll have to go talk with as far as that road sliding towards this facility here.
Ben, I might say something, excuse me to you while you're there, too. This project, from a property value point of view, much better than if it stayed in your living center.
Right.
Versus what these people.
Right.
This would go and prove the values of like where your mama lived.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. I just wanted to know about how this road was coming across, and I didn't understand that this was going to move and affect those houses. Right. That being said, listen, I think there's four houses down through there.
Right.
All right, they were taking four, skipping my mom's, taking the one across the street, left her on an island. All right? So I've already talked to who I needed to talk to concerning that, but now if they're sliding this, they're not going to affect any of those homes that are sitting over there. Of course, those people are going to be upset, but that's here, here, there.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mom, you got anything? Yeah, where's your front?
And you can draw on this monitor here. You can draw on this.
Yeah, the front entrance is going to be, there's a porticoche here, so this will be the front entrance just right there.
Yes, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Being on Hereford Farm, they'll never get out.
All right, thank you, sir.
They will at 2:00 AM.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning?
Jim, we had one lady submit something in writing.
Yes, ma'am.
She couldn't stay.
Yes, ma'am.
So if I could just read that.
Yes, ma'am.
It's from Sandra Hoffman at 408 Conemar Trail in Evans. She says she talked to the road construction people. Hereford Farm Road widening will not begin for five years. This putt will cause a severe traffic and backup problem on Hereford Farm Road. The widening project of Hereford Farm Road must be done before five years that this development is approved. That's all she asked me to say.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, with that being said, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for RZ 20-5-5 to be approved as planned for.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
And with any conditions?
With conditions.
All right, seconds to hold? All right, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 4-1. We've got a companion variance, Ms. Balty, file VA 200501. No, that's not a companion variance, I'm sorry, it's a separate file.
Hey, no, I read this.
Long night.
They're actually not very close to each other in this case. This is a variance for a property at 6110 Wrightsboro Road. This is a variance to Section 74-43 subdivisions with private roads. This is the location of the property on the south side of Wrightsboro Road. It does include part of this larger parcel. We'll see with the plat here in a moment. It's currently zoned RA, residential agricultural, as is everything around it. And this is the aerial of the existing property lines and the plat, so we can see that with the development of Conell Farms, which came before you guys for preliminary plat approval back in February, they were revising the property lines for this parcel a little bit, basically kind of shifting the shape of it. It does keep approximately the same acreage. It is a non-conforming RA lot. It is just under two and a half acres. They were allowed to shift the property lines since they kept the acreage about the same as the existing lot. And this sits at the entrance to Conell Farms, so this is the subject parcel up here at the entrance. Conell Farms does have a private road that is intended to remain gravel, to be unpaved. Section 74-43 requires that any lot accessing such a road has to be at least five acres in size. This first lot is not. So the preliminary plat was approved with the condition that that lot retain its existing driveway access on Wrightsboro Road. Wrightsboro Road is a Georgia DOT state road. Their comments on the driveway permit indicated that they would very much prefer the driveway come off of the new private road rather than having a second access point on Wrightsboro Road. Hence the variance request before you tonight to allow this lot to have access to the private road. To give you an idea of the distance, that is the existing driveway on the left and the approximate location of the new subdivision road, literally just up the street. As far as whether this is an acceptable variance, obviously, we have the DOT comments to consider. It's also very likely that the intent behind this ordinance is to reduce basically impact to a private road for maintenance purposes for the residents. With this lot being right at the entrance to the development, that does minimize, obviously, traffic on the rest of the road, because they're really only using a very small part of it. So staff is recommending approval with the condition that the variance only applies to that existing parcel and shall not be construed to allow any other lots in the development to be subdivided. So the rest of them will have to remain at least five acres. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here? Mr. Prather? Only public we've got.
I'm here for Bo, who's here for my dad, and Bo's fishing and Dad's gone to the beach, so. They both owe me a lot, so. Any questions? I'm not, I think I'm just, I think they bought the property next door because of the site distance from DOT. They wouldn't give them a driveway, so we had to buy the property, move it. That's the background, as far as I know it all.
Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak either for or against? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA 200501.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? To approve carries 5-0. We have three minor waivers that are for information only tonight. Ms. Mistry, file MW 200301.
Yes, so this location is 813 Nasher Court. It's .3 acres, and the current zoning is R2. This is the location and the zoning map and a close-up of the aerial that shows existing home. So this is the back of the lot, and the minor waiver is a 10% encroachment into the 10-foot rear setback for the construction of this new pool and house. And that's just another drawing of it. And that was approved on March 6th.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Butler, file MW 200401. Walk faster, son. Walk with purpose.
Yeah, I got nowhere else to be, come on. The 720 Campaign Drive, 0.4 acres. It's in the Bell Tower Development. This is the location of the property, again, off Hardymont Manus, currently zoned R2. And aerial view of the site, again, not a building there at all. This is the site plan. With the request, they reduced about 10% on the front of the property to allow for encroachment into the setback. You have a 55-foot setback there, so it's, we take out the right-of-way, we're looking at 30-foot setback at 25. So they reduced it down to 24 and a half, I'd be able to meet that. One thing that we discussed at length multiple times was the 10-foot rear setback. There is a comment in the approval letter, they cannot go into that 10-foot setback, so they may be coming back, we'll see. And this is approved back in March.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Neal, file MW 200402.
This was a request for a minor waiver at 219 Calhoun Drive on four acres, currently zoned R2, single-family residential. This is the location of the site, zoning, which is currently R2, aerial of the site. And this is the site plan. The applicant requested to decrease the south side setback from 10 feet to nine feet to accommodate a pool, which is within the 10% threshold for administrative approval, and it was approved on March 17th.
Thank you, ma'am. We have no legal matters. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments? I'd like to thank Ms. Garnowitz and her sheriff's auxiliary for helping us out tonight. We had a large agenda tonight, and it would have gone a lot more slowly if you all hadn't been here to help us. We thank you for that. And I'd also like to thank staff for working with us on this, because I know this was a Herculean task to get this many things together at once.
Add the IT, also Parks and Rec were helping getting not only the IT component up and[1746.31]